Switch it back over. All right, it looks like we're good to go.
Things ready? Okay, we'll open up this morning with our opening invocation and then Will, if you would, lead us in the pledge.
Join me?
Dear heavenly father, we thank you for so much that you give us, Lord. We thank you for our veterans and the ones that have given so much to our country, Lord. We continue to pray for our commissioners and other elected officials as they conduct the county business, but also our national business, Lord, and I just pray that you will be with them, lead God and direct them. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. Approve the amendments of the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Everybody had time to look at those. They were sent online.
Make the motion to approve the motions as presented.
Okay, we got a motion to approve. All those papers signify by saying aye. Okay. Settlements of states, Mary Ingalls not with us today, so Kelly will be doing those.
We have the six of the final settlements of Betty Lee Baker Smith, Joseph Ezekiel Sizmore, Ansel Doomire Williams, Alice Ruth Roth, Ada Fay Yates, and Hugh Dillard Barnwell. Those estates are all in order.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the final settlements as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Financial, excuse me, exonerations, county splits and consolidations.
Are none.
There are none today. So skip them. Okay, financial approvals, Robyn McCullough, our county clerk's not here today, so Kelly again has that.
The arts and rec transfer. I have the following. The Ronsford Raiders Youth Football for four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That's their twenty-four, twenty-five field marking. The town of Rainell Pool, forty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, and that's their twenty-five, twenty-six pool heater. The Meta River Trail, nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-five cents. That's going to be for phase three engineering, AML reimbursement. The Meta River Trail, two thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars, and that's the consulting, partial AML and TAP grant reimbursements. The Friends of the White Sulphur Springs Fish Hat Tree, which is two thousand, two hundred dollars, and that is the twenty-five, twenty-six programming for freshwater Folk Festival. And then lastly, the Meta River Trail for three hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and five cents. That's phase three construction work, and that is the AML reimbursement. So it's a total of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, we have a motion to transfer four hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars, fifty cents from savings to checking to cover these invoices. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, budget revisions.
We have three, and that is, first one is to increase general account seven hundred, five, six, seven in the amount of four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. That is for the monthly deputy sheriff uniform payment for the month of October. We have a budget revision needed to increase nine hundred, five, six, seven. That is the farmer's market and the amount of nine hundred and eighty dollars, and that is for the cash received and deposited for the market. And lastly, we have increased communication center maintenance and repair equipment, seven, twelve, two, one, six, by two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. And that is for a gov deals payment that was received and for the nine-one-one center.
Do we have a motion to approve the budget revisions as presented? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Line item transfers.
I don't have any.
None? Okay, we've got the bills, invoices for the last couple of weeks, and I would move that we pay those as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, down the new bids. First item, open bids received for the GS, GHSEM generator maintenance. That's the maintenance one for all of our towers for our nine-one-one system. We've got
One. One.
So the one bid that we received was for the maintenance of the towers. This will receive from Greenbrier Technologies and Electric and Boesberg. Oh, flip it over. Uh, let's see. Their bid for the generator maintenance, I'm assuming this is per year, is four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Is that correct? Just per year, okay. And then an hourly rate under sub, under section seven, says hourly rate, not including parts for emergency call-out work is ninety dollars an hour, plus mileage at seventy cents per mile.
Usually we take these bids and review them and everything, but I'll make a recommendation that we approve pending that approved, the contract, pending that everything is, we look at over after meeting, everything is in proper order. That way we don't have to go back through it again. That's in all right?
Good meeting.
Okay, I'll make that as a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, so that one's taken care of. Consideration of draw request number fifteen for the Greenbrier County Geek Ready Project. And we got Cassie or Amanda, Amanda, okay.
On this one. Cassie's on the next.
Good morning.
Morning.
So yeah, we have draw request number fifteen for the Greenbrier Geek Ready Project. This one is going to have an invoice to CityNet for Make Ready Work. The total invoice amount is one hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. The match portion coming from the the TIF funds is thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. And the amount requested from grant funds is one hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and three cents. So that's a total of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents.
Okay.
Make them, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say our part of this is thirty-seven, two, eighty-four, sixty-nine.
I'll make a motion to approve thirty-seven thousand, two, eighty-four, sixty-nine to be paid out of the TIF funds for draw request number fifteen.
Okay.
I will mention, this one does include Make Ready Work.
Okay.
So if it includes Make Ready, does that, do we need to pay the entire amount?
You have in the past, just so that things keep rolling, but that's up to the commission. But this one would make payments to, you know, AEP Frontier, things like that for the Make Ready, the pool work.
Is the state caught up with us on their reimbursement to us?
No, not yet.
All right, then I will make revise my motion.
You'll amend your motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna amend my motion to pay the total invoice amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents with the expectation that the state will reimburse us seventy-five percent of one hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and three cents.
Okay. Already. That's, I agree with that motion because that way we can move things along because we're getting a little short on time and that'll, that'll push things on down the road. So all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Thank you. Consideration of resolution number nine, wastewater treatment plant disinfectioning project, White Sulphur Springs.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, Cassie, we can hear you. We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Let's see.
There.
Maybe. Okay, there we go. As noted, we have resolution number nine for the wastewater treatment plant disinfection system project. This resolution includes only one invoice. It includes pay estimate number eight for Varatus Contracting, the construction contractor for the project. The amount of one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, and then it comes from the TIF, from the Tax Incremental Financing Fund.
That is correct.
Not from general funds. Okay, do we have a motion to pay the eleven hundred and fifty dollars, send fifty cents to the contractor?
So moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay. Consideration of resolution number four, Mapledale Water Storage Tank Project, White Sulphur Springs TIF. Yeah, so you got that one too.
Yes, this resolution also includes only one invoice. We're asking to reimburse the town for expenses associated with securing their DOH bond necessary for the project. That's in the amount of one thousand dollars, again requested of the TIF fund.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we reimburse the city of White Sulphur from the TIF fund, one thousand dollars for the invoices relating to the storage thing project. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Consideration to provide authority for the city of White Sulphur to advertise for bids for the Mapledale Water Storage Tank Projects. The TIF project to add a water tank, storage tank, up the pressure up night route ninety-two. So you got that one, Cassie?
We are happy to assist with that, and we do have Brandon Conley on with us as well, the engineer for the project. And essentially, the city is in a position now to advertise for construction bids for that project. As the county is providing financing for that project through the TIF fund, they would like to ask your blessing and approval when advertising that project for bids.
We have a motion to approve the city of White Sulphur to advertise for bids for the Mapledale Storage Water Tank.
I moved.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. So it's approved. Consideration to provide authority to the city of White Sulphur to award the ridges project. It's also a White Sulphur, TIF project.
Have we received? Have we received that information of the the cost of the ridges project?
Yes, I think so.
I think we have. I've been to meetings where we've discussed it quite a bit with the city of White Sulphur. And this is award to, or White Sulphur. Yeah, to award the project, so.
Since this was considered somewhat of an emergency project, bids were solicited and essentially the city is requesting authority to award contract to the lowest bidder. And
What was that cost?
Let me find that real quick. I'm sorry, that was one I didn't have pulled up right.
I'm looking, this is Brandon, the engineer on the project. Let me shuffle my paperwork here. The total amount of the actual award. The base quote was seven hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. And since the quotes come in under, we were also going to award ad alternate number one, the amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars even.
Can you repeat that verse number seven, what?
Seven, zero, seven, seven, four, eight, fifty-three, and the ad alternate was thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven. Total amount is seven hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-three cents. And that is contract number one to C two G Engineering Incorporated.
C two G. Engineering Corporation. I'll make a motion to accept the, or to allow the city of White Sulphur to award the ridges project to the C two G Engineering Corp. in the amount of seven forty-five, four seventy-five, fifty-three cents.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And that's a very needed project to get water to the top of the mountain there. A lot of times it's dead, hollow water.
Yes.
So we, we need to get that project completed.
Just a side note, I believe initially the lead times were anticipated to be longer than they are now, Brandon. Is that correct?
That's correct. We were looking at ten, twenty weeks. Now some of the items are coming down two to eight weeks. Some electronics are three to four weeks. So some of these may actually start moving along quicker. I'm anticipating a pre-construction conference on December seventeenth, so January, February, we may start to see items going in place.
Okay. So the next on our list is, we already voted on that one, right? So I'm gonna make sure I didn't skip it. Consider appointment of a new member to the PSD number two. And I have that. The PSD number two. Please appoint Jordan Ross to the district's board in place of this last, this name, I'm not sure.
Ultimately, it's Benny.
Benny.
Damasio.
Damasio. And so anyway, as of December thir- thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, so we have a motion to point Jordan Ross to the board of PSD number two. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Consider awarding the managed service provider contract for homeland security and emergency management office. You didn't print it out. I was looking for it, but I couldn't.
No, that was that one that you guys, you had met with on my own.
I just hang on a minute, we'll get this printed out so we can read it.
This is the original one that they asked me.
You had that with them, right? You met with them?
Yes. Yeah, I met with them and emailed back and forth and called a couple of times with them. And I guess this is our best option. We're waiting for that to print out. You want to drop them down to number nine?
Sure.
Knock that out? Discussion of commissioner board appointments. Since at this point in time, Commissioner Tencher is no longer with us. We went through and kind of so that all the bases are covered on the various boards and assign different boards to different people and to the two of us. And you want to read through that or go with the highlights?
Yeah, sure. So all three, or all commissioners collectively serve on the Arts and Recs Reallocation Committee, the Community Corrections Committee, and the Courthouse Security Committee. Commissioner Rose will now serve on the Greenbrier Board of Health, Greenbrier Valley Economic Development Board, Region Four Planning and Development, and Greenbrier Humane Society. I will serve on the Airport Authority, the Greenbrier County Extension four H Advisory Board, the CBB, the Greenbrier County Planning Commission. And until we have a replacement, Lo and I will split up the responsibilities for the local Emergency Planning Commission, Region One Workforce Local Affected Officials Board, the E nine-one-one Advisory Board, and the Greenbrier County Farmland Protection Board.
Okay. All right. Does that require a vote or is it just something to announce? I don't know that we need to vote on it.
I mean, as long as you're both good, agreed collectively, I think you need to.
I'll make a motion that we adopt these appointments at this time until we've got a third commissioner and at that time we'll
revisit.
Revisit and go back again. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you. Okay, now we have the number eight, the consider awarding managed service provider contractor Homeland Security and Emergency Management Office. And this is a contract for I guess IT services for the nine-one-one center and the towers.
And this one, of course, is the advanced one.
Yeah, this is the advanced.
Yeah, if you want to adjust it still, you guys can, that would be like the worst case scenario.
But these we reviewed, reviewed these with was their Lynn's name?
Lynn Angst.
Angst, Lynn Angst. He's kind of a supervisor, or not supervisor, but advisor. And this contract offer is the one that covers our bases the best and luckily and preferably I like that it's a local company that we deal with anyway.
Yeah, I agree.
So we'll have a motion to approve Greenbrier Technologies and Electric with a monthly total of forty-three, thirty-six, four thousand, three hundred and thirty-six, and the one-time total twenty-three, forty-four, twenty-five.
We had received other
Several of them.
Several other options that were reviewed that were much more expensive, so to speak. And so I, I agree with Lowell. You made the motion correct. I absolutely agree with you.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, we use remember our technology electric for that. Number ten, consider resolution regarding authority of the Homeland Security and Emergency Management Agency to apply for grants. Okay. Remember county nation. Now I guess this is the sheet on that. Whereas the emergency, federal emergency management agency provides funding to state, local, tribal, and territorial governments through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Following a presidentially declared disaster for the purpose of, among other things, rego- rebuilding in a way that either reduces or mitigates future disaster-related losses in the community, the Greenbrier County Commission can apply for HMGP funding as a subsipient through the State Hazard Mitigation Program. Whereas HMGP funding requires the public of the commitment, excuse me, of local funds, administrative management, and the advancement of local public funds in furtherance of the HMGP projects and whereas due to physical responsibilities of the commission under the HMGP, any commitment to apply for grant assistance whereby the commission is a sub-recipient with contractual and physical responsibility shall report for a review and approval by the commission and now therefore be it resolved that in advance to any, of any commitment to apply for HMGP funding, the emergency management director shall request review of the proposed project and receive approval of the funding commitment by official act of the commission. So we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Make a motion to approve the resolution regarding homeland security and emergency management agencies applying for HMGP grants.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Now we have the second reading of the Greenbrier County Property Nuisance Ordinance.
I'll make a motion to read the nuisance article by title and article.
Okay.
Before the Greenbrier County Commission of the Greenbrier County, West Virginia, and ordinance relating to the abatement of public nuisance. And I'll read the intro here. Whereas section eleven article. I'm terrible with Roman numerals.
She's nine.
Nine, thank you. Of the Constitution of West Virginia, West Virginia Code seven dash one dash three provide for the superintendents and administration of the internal police and fiscal affairs of the county by the county commissions. And whereas West Virginia Code seven dash one dash three KK authorizes a county commission to enact ordinances, issue orders, and take other appropriate and necessary actions for the elimination of hazards to public health and safety and to abate anything which the commission deems to be a public nuisance within a county and now therefore be enacted by the county commission of the Greenbrier County, West Virginia, sitting in a regular meeting on the blank day of blank twenty twenty-five, the Greenbrier County ordinance to abate public nuisance is as follows. Article one is general provisions. Article two. Article two is public nuisance. Article three, investigation and report. Article four, notice and hearing. Article Four, notice and hearing, Article Five, abatement of nuisance, Article Seven are penalties. I mean, I'm, excuse me, Article Six is penalties, Article Seven is the effective date, and Article Eight would be the enactment.
And our county attorney, Britt Ludwig's here, do you want to comment or anything on this?
Yes, sir, uh, with the second reading, uh, the county commission can now, uh, if it deems appropriate, consider adoption.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we adopt. The ordinance relating to the abatement of public nuisance for Greenbrier County.
And, uh, I'll. Agree with that, but, uh, since the number, numeration is off, uh, that, uh, let's approve it with, uh. And I'll sign it once the, uh, corrections to the numeration is, are made.
Good deal.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying ah. Okay, then it's passed. Consider, uh, consider adoption of the Greenbrier County property, that's what we just did. Just, that's, uh, second part of what we did, so we did both those. So, uh.
Oh, yeah.
The only announcement we have now is the RFP for the roof. Uh, at day report.
It is on the website, and, um, so there are three documents, once they go to it. Do you remember the due date? It's not, for some reason. But it is, it is up on the website, so we will present it at a future meeting. It looks like its proposal due date is going to be on November twentieth, um, twenty twenty-five by four P M. So we can open those bids on that twenty-first, that Friday, our next commission meeting, so this is a pretty quick turnaround. Uh, due to this, the need.
Yeah, if we want to get that project started, this, soon as we can get the bids in and approve them and everything, so. Alright. So those will be up on our website, um. Anything else that has been approved today that, uh, needs to be, we can, will be uploaded to the website as well, so. I don't know that there's a lot to do, a lot, others to do, but everything will be. Being there. Okay, anything else for the meeting today?
Motion to adjourn at ten forty.
Ten forty, alright, all those in favor signify by saying ah.
Ah.
Were adjourned.